Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for hanging with us while we're getting a little organized at this unusual hour for our board meeting tonight. It's nice to see you. I'm going to officially call this meeting to order. The meeting will be livestreamed still on the district YouTube channel and a direct link will be recorded video will be posted on our website. It's also an opportunity I have to announce that the board will have an election of candidates. For board members, that election will be April 8th, and there are two open seats each for a three-year term. I will read the names of those candidates as they are listed on the ballot. If they are in the room, please stand so we can recognize your face. Jason Russell, Erin Peters, Roy Copeland III, Jess Rezak, Dan Wartick, and Carolyn Mason. At this point, we call this meeting to order, and I would ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Secretary, if you would call the roll. Mrs. Hines. Mrs. Wagner. Dr. Ward. Ms. Reinhardt. Mr. Jacobs. Ms. Gleason Miller. Ms. Reinhardt. Did I say it twice? Oh, sorry. I had my numbers were off. Mrs. Kalk. Thank you. We'll start our meeting tonight with our champions of service and invite Dr. Avila to the podium, please.
Well, good evening. We have two special champions of service tonight representing our school community resource specialists in celebration of School Social Work Week from last week. So I could please have Megan Shipley and Brandy Stout please come forward at this time. I'm going to tell you a little bit about each of them. Starting with Megan, even as an early career professional, Megan has become a key leader on our S E R S team. From the time she began with us as an intern, her schools report that she is an invaluable asset to their students, families, and staff. Megan efficiently juggles three buildings, serving each at a high level. She easily develops rapport with families and helps them navigate difficult situations to provide stability for their children. Recently, Megan assisted one of her schools when they were navigating a difficult crisis. They shared she was professional, reassuring, and just what the students needed at that time. Brandy. Brandy is a true wealth of community resource information, giving her all to serve students and families. She acts as a liaison to several initiatives, especially in the area of housing and McKinney-Vento services. Brandy is a mentor to new S E R Ss and a placement supervisor for M S W interns. She is always willing to take on extra duties in her building, such as serving as yearbook sponsor. Her S E R S coworkers often pick her brain for ideas and resources that could help their students and families. One of Brandy's strengths is her tenacity. She will pursue a solution as far as possible to best serve the students and families of Northgate Middle School. Thank you so much to both of you.
Awesome to hear about your job and then all the extra ways and all the special things that you do to really bring quality and customer service and putting kids first and making such a difference in their lives. Thank you for that devotion and dedication to your service and for going the extra mile. It's very impressive. It's very nice to have you here tonight. I'm going to pass the mic to you if you have anyone here tonight that is here to also congratulate you.
Okay, I brought my parents and my boyfriend and my principal Jess Monique and my other principal Amy Williams and Dr. Janelle Porter and my mentor Wendy Marks.
My husband wanted to be here, but I put him on kid duty. He's taking the kids to soccer practice. My assistant principal Tammy May is here, Amanda Bearden is here, and Dr. Janelle Porter and Wendy Marks. And of course.
And your friend.
Well, we know in your positions, you have better connections to resources than what many of us even understand. You know the best ways to serve families and students, and you probably hear more of the stories and the truth behind what's going on outside of our walls than what any of us do. So thank you for that. Thank you for your empathetic hearts, for just giving to any family or staff member. I know you've helped plenty of us in times of need too. So thank you for that. We are so very proud to honor you tonight in this way. I would love to hear just in your experiences, what would you say has been your favorite part of the job overall?
So I transitioned into the position about a decade ago. Prior to this, I did teach in a high school. And I think getting to work with families more than just the kids has been one of the parts that I've loved about the job. I didn't think I'd like middle school when I got hired. And I don't think I would leave middle school now that I've been here because it's a great transition age. And I think sometimes because they are so mature, but so kidlike, that that connection between working with the parents and supporting the parents, but then also getting to work with the kids one-on-one and problem solve has been one of the better parts of the job.
I would say my favorite part of my job is, it can be a very challenging job, but it's also really rewarding. And so I think the relationships that you get to form with kids and their families and also going on year four, I have a deep connection with all of my family, so getting to see their growth, it just makes it really rewarding, and I love my job.
Well, thank you. We are really appreciative of everything that you do. And I know that my colleagues would like to also congratulate you and appreciate you as well. So we'll have you start on this side and come around the table. Thank you.
Before we close out this portion of our agenda, we have seven special champions that we'd like to recognize tonight as well. If you don't know, March is School Board Recognition Month in the state of Missouri. And so one of our communications interns went over to the E E C to help us celebrate and get some input from some of our youngest learners. And we'll just have you take a look at the screens and see what they had to say. They are certainly the cutest. Also, while we wait for this here, I do just want to say we, as a staff here, really just appreciate the way you give it yourself so selflessly with your time, your talents, and the incredible support you give to us as we champion on too. So we wouldn't be able to do the great work that we do without the support from you all. So thank you very, very much.
I'm bad.
I'm good.
Something you draw on. I don't know.
A school board for a school.
Maybe if you were a kid, you could look on the board and it could tell you what you have to do.
I think a tall person that's taller than my dad.
Maybe eight is part of the school board.
A hundred dollars.
A hundred maybe twenty dollars.
A pile of one, two, one million, one million, one million dollars.
So much, but I don't have dollars because I don't have real dollars. We have a card.
The custodians.
Your tour.
I think they work on maybe what we do and what we do on school. Keep everything safe.
Do stuff for school.
And there's everything important. There's school just good. It was important.
My dad's teacher that used to be here.
My daddy knows.
Hey, so why is mom like?
It kind of looks like Sarias.
Thank you for all that you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank?
Well, out of the mouth of babes, and they give as much energy as they had, it gives us energy. So thank you very much for putting that together. It's very nice. We have before you an agenda. Do I have a motion, please? Second. We've been second for approval of the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. And opposed, same sign. And the agenda is approved. I'll wait just a second. Thanks for coming tonight. There is an item of new business, an amendment to the 24-25 academic calendars. Dr.?
Well, as you know, we've had way too many snow days. So we would love to present a plan tonight for making up those days, knowing that there are some changes that could be coming our way. We spoke about this with C T T N, and it was a unanimous vote that we would change both a teacher work day on Friday, March 21st, and a professional development day on April 18th to full student attendance days. And I want to commend our teacher representatives here on C T T N because there wasn't even a discussion about it. They, along with the administrative representation, all prioritized student learning. And we knew that that had been shortened because of our incredible number of snow days. So thank you for that. We talk about being relentless champions for all students and each other. They really showed it in that moment too. So appreciate that greatly. So two full student attendance days on those dates, that would bring us back after Memorial Day for an additional three days in order to meet the 169-day requirement that gets us also an incentive for teacher pay. So that is certainly the goal in addition to making sure student learning is robust as it can possibly be. We do know that there's legislation out there right now that could potentially forgive those days in May, but we likely won't know that until mid-May. So we would love to proceed with this plan with the board's approval to make up five days. And I would like to pinky swear that I will call no more snow days. We'll see. It's been a crazy year. So we'd love to answer any questions that you all may have, but I think this would be the best solution for student learning.
Any questions? Hearing none. Do we have a, did I ask for a motion?
Would you like a motion?
I would love a motion, please. I'm sorry.
Or at least to vote on the extension of the school calendar as shown.
Been moved in second for the amendment to the 24-25 academic calendar as shown. All those in favor, say aye. And opposed, same sign. It's unanimous. Thank you very much for bringing that. Thank you, C T T N as well. Our workshop topic today is program evaluations for the early ed and gifted programs, and Dr. Sutton.
Well, I really wish we could have done this after the video because that's going to be pretty tough to beat. But we really, our team really appreciates the opportunity tonight to share with you the results of two program evaluations. Of course, early education and gifted programming. And this directly relates to item number one on our balanced scorecard on the student quadrant that has to do with program evaluation and association with student achievement. And I really, really want to thank Dr. Lawson and Kami, who's of course our principal at the Early Education Center, and Kate at the Gifted Center for just the tremendous work and time and effort that they put into this. I gave Dr. Lawson two program evaluations that are under special programs this year, which is certainly a lot of work, but they really set the standard, I believe, for program evaluations and doing high-quality work as we move forward. So thank you so much for your leadership and work in that. The program evaluation consisted of three phases. The first phase was really about describing the program, thinking about our intended outcomes of the program, and then developing those evaluation questions. Then we moved on to phase two, which was really all about the data and the qualitative data and quantitative data. The quantitative, of course, focused more on student achievement results. And the qualitative data focused more on focus group interviews and surveys of our students, staff, and families. So quite a bit of data that we were able to gather and put into what you'll see tonight. And then finally, phase three is all about evaluating the results and reporting the themes to you tonight and then beginning the development of our action plans within gifted and early education. I'm going to turn it over to Kami to get us started on our early education report. And also, by the way, you do have both copies of those evaluation reports as well. In this presentation tonight, we'll kind of highlight each one of those.
Hello, everybody. Nice to be here. How cool is it I get to go to work with all those kids in that video all the time and play? It's a good place to be. What are we going to get started? Early education program comprehensive review. Our mission is right there to provide a safe and positive learning environment for our kids through a continuum of services. We're going to talk about that in a moment, and to provide high-quality individualized early learning so they can be lifelong learners. Delivery of services. We have ECSC. We have center-based preschool, which is half-day, school-based, tuition, parents as teachers, and success by six. Success by six, I don't know if you're familiar with that. That's a toy lending library. It's open to any resident. They can come in, parents come in, borrow a toy, play with it, and then bring it back. Okay. But also, our teachers use that a lot. It's a great way for them to borrow something that they may need for maybe a student that just started. Try out something, and then if we need to purchase that for that classroom, we can do that. We love that piece. Early childhood special education, those students come depending on what their I U P dictates. So some students might come for half-days, some students might come two days, some students might come for appointments. So the I U P team determines what that looks like. Center-based is five days, half-day, A M. and P M. session, and school-based is full day. Tuition preschool is also that full-day piece as well. And then in our elementary schools, school-based preschool is full day, and we have 17 of those. Funding sources, how we get our money to do all the great things that we do, A D A. And that is related to our full-day classrooms. Early childhood special education, we have a grant that we are reimbursed in arrears for. And so we use that for early childhood special education. We have Mo Q P K, and that is new this year. And so we have, I believe, nine classrooms that are being funded that way, and we're looking at turning more over into that funding. We have title preschool. We have tuition, which is parent pay. And then we also have some local funds that we use as well. Look at those demographics. We serve a variety of students. What's really great about the Early Education Center is the opportunities that we get as educators to meet new families, learn about their families, learn about their culture. I'm always amazed at a new language. I'm like, I've never heard of that. Tell me more. So it's really a neat place to be in the sense of we have so much diversity there. So you can see that our numbers are little, are right where the district is, but we've exceeded in a few areas as well. So just making sure we serve all of our at-risk students and meet those needs for them. And we have more demographics. You can check out our gender compared to the school district. Free and reduced lunch, look at that. So we're really meeting that need of some of our families so that they have an opportunity to experience a school setting before they go to kindergarten. Also, E L L. Again, that kind of goes back to what I mentioned. When families come in and we find out the language that they use, I'm always just shocked. I've never heard of that one. Tell me more about that. And so just meeting the needs of those students that may have English as a second language, giving them an experience. students that may have English as a second language, giving them an experience, so that when they go off to kindergarten, they're well-set. So, goals for us that we were looking at for this evaluation is just making sure we're providing access to those that are eligible, those students that are eligible, and hooking them up into the right type of program that they need. Also, providing them resources. We have a great SCR, SCRS group that if families need resources that are beyond our means, we hook them up with them as well. Kindergarten readiness. Looking at the individual child and determining what they need to be ready for kindergarten. You know, we have this idea in our head what kindergarten readiness may be, but each kid is an individual, and where they come in, and we want to look at what they're bringing to us and where we take them in the end. And that's great progress. So, we look at that kindergarten readiness, too. And then transition. It's really hard for our families to imagine taking their kids to kindergarten. And so, ensuring that parents feel like they have the knowledge about what it's gonna look like, or if I have questions, who can I reach out to? So, those are our three goals with this comprehensive review. We were fortunate enough to have parents and guardians of preschoolers provide input with this, teachers and staff, building and district leaders, and community members. So, I feel like we had a wide array of input for our review. Fiscal resources for full day. This is now Katie Lawson's turn to take the clicker.
She always turns it over to me when it's time to talk about the money.
Yes.
So, part of our review also included ensuring that we're looking at the fiscal resources that we're using for early childhood, and we'll also look at this with our gifted programming. The reason we really focused on those full-day classrooms is because, reminder that early childhood special ed, 100% reimbursable in the arrears. So, we are 100% reimbursed, no matter what the expense on early childhood special ed. And then our title funds are reimbursable within that same year. So, any classrooms that are funded with title are also 100% reimbursable. So, if we break down the total cost per student in a full-day classroom, you'll see that it is just over $4,500. What this doesn't show is the amount that we bring in through that MoQPK or that ADA grant. So, down there in small print, you can see the formula, and it actually, we more than break even in terms of what we bring in for that MoQPK, as long as a child qualifies. And so, it's really important that we say that with a clause. That MoQPK is legislator-dependent each year, but without any funds available, it would cost us about, you know, that $4,700 to educate a student. And then we do bring in, and we hate to call it revenue, but there is a formula we use for each student count for that MoQPK. And so, we, you know, again, with, working with Dr. Johnson this week as we were talking through FTEs, we just about break even in terms of those full-day classrooms with that MoQPK. ADA, we've spoken with you about that in the past. Same formula, except for it is attendance-dependent. So, the MoQPK assumes that state 94% attendance, where the ADA is on actual attendance of the students. So, we like the MoQPK. We feel like it's just a little bit more of a reliable, consistent funding source for us. So, that is a huge shout-out to Mr. Fritz and his team in terms of working with us to gather all of this information. The learner commitment. So, when we opened up the Early Education Center, we all came under one umbrella. We opened up with four pillars with our staff, and those four pillars really are that school family. And so, we want to ensure that not only do our students feel like part of a school family in the classroom, but our families feel like part of our school family. And so, that first one is just really making sure that our families and our students can connect. And so, we do, with our staff and with our families, we call that creating the student family. The second bullet here is that implementing that guaranteed and viable curriculum. Super proud of our work around the standards-based learning and grading, and you may wonder, like, how does that fit into early ed? Well, there's 174 standards that we're asked to teach, and as you can imagine, we have about 1,200 students with 1,200 different needs, and all but 80 of those are high-risk. So, it really is important that when we talk about guaranteed and viable, like, what can we truly say to families? Like, we guarantee this, and what can we ensure that every student has access to? So, we've used the standards-based time to really hone in on those standards, and we use a process through Larry Ainsworth. It's a real process, and we've narrowed it down to 14 standards that we are guaranteeing that we are addressing in every single classroom, and that we are reporting back out to families. So, we're super proud of that work, and thank you to Dr. Sutton for leading the charge on that standards-based piece. The third bullet is really that sense of belonging, and just ensuring that our students see themselves in the work that we're doing. Like Kami shared with you, we serve 21% of the students we serve, English is their second language. And so, again, a very, very diverse population, and how can we ensure that their culture and their values are represented in our classrooms as well? And so, that is a priority that we have at the center. And then finally, that fourth one is just reflecting and refining our practices. We're only in our fourth year as a large system, and so, we are, you can't constantly be reflecting and refining, right? But we can constantly be reflecting and then refining through data and information that we're receiving. And this information tonight is just gonna be awesome for us to continue to take back to our teams, so we can really see where within these pillars and with the goals that Kami shared, do we want to really refine and reflect those practices? So, we don't just say play, grow, and learn at the Early Ed Center. We mean that these are the things that we want to ensure that we're addressing. So, through that play is really that project construct piece. We want to make sure that we provide students where they are interacting with each other in their environment to learn and grow. And so, that play is very much a core value at the Early Ed Center. That growing piece, this photo is one of my most favorite moments from when we opened. This is a student that had never walked, and then her dad came in the first time we had, we were actually training staff. He brought her in, and just watching that opportunity was incredibly powerful. But, growing can look very different, and that's what this picture represents to us, is how different it can truly look. Because at the Early Education Center, every student has a different need, and so, how can we ensure that we know that student and that family enough to know what those needs are, so we can ensure they're growing? And then, of course, that learning piece, I talked to you about just making sure that we have that guaranteed and viable curriculum, as well in terms of that learning. How are we utilizing our frameworks to ensure that students are learning? So, how can we create those social interactions with the environment and with each other, so that that learning occurs? So, that leads us to our three evaluation questions. And one thing that we felt like, we were kind of the guinea pig group, and so, I would like to thank Dr. Sutton, and I've had a few other words for Dr. Sutton, about having two programs that get to go through the comprehensive review this school year. But, it's been awesome. One thing that we determined with Sage and with early childhood is we really want our evaluation questions to match our goals. And so, hopefully, when you look back at our goals, you'll see that the evaluation questions are really addressing those goals, because those are the goals of our program. So, we wanted to be able to use all of this feedback then to ensure that we're hitting the mark. And so, you'll notice that these three evaluation questions really do align with those goals. That first one is really just making sure that we're providing students with access to play, grow, and learn, right? And so, what does our access look like? Do families feel like they understand what's available to them? I had the awesome opportunity of filling in Friday. We were a little short-staffed. So, I got to sit in some IEPs, and just being able to sit down with families now and share all of the different ways in which we can implement an IEP, it's so much broader than it used to be. So, that first one is about access, ensuring that we're supporting that developmental progress. The second one that you see on here is on that kindergarten readiness. And it's been an awesome experience in terms of that, to ensure what does kindergarten readiness looks like. I'm super excited to share with you kind of where we're going with that, and then some more work along with CTTN that is coming with that kindergarten readiness, because then that leads to the third one, which is that kindergarten transition. When I share with you some of our surveys and who they went out to, we really wanted to make sure we're hitting that target audience through those evaluation questions. So, we had our questions, and then we determined the different methods of data collection we would do. So, we had focus groups, and focus groups are narrow, but they allow for a lot more of an in-depth conversation. So, we had focus groups with parents, as well as a staff focus group. And I just want to give a shout-out to the academic services team. Mitzi Nessa, Kristi Collins, and Shannon Shelton led those focus groups. And I just think, having done qualitative research for my dissertation, like, there's a lot of power in ensuring that the key stakeholders aren't in the room waiting to hear what we want to hear. It was people that really didn't have a deep connection with early childhood, so hopefully, those were some pretty authentic opportunities for feedback to be shared. And so, again, we had that focus group. It was staff had a focus group, and then parents had a focus group. And again, those are narrow groups, but more in-depth conversation. And then the surveys, we actually surveyed two different parent groups because of our goals and our evaluation questions. We surveyed our current preschool parents, because we wanted to hear about, like, how are some of those things going currently? And we actually sent a survey to our current kindergarten families separately, because we wanted to hear, like, how did the transition really go? Did you have the support that you felt like you needed? Some interesting data that we can share with you here in a moment about that. Survey also went to all staff. Again, that focus group was small. While that focus group had representation from all of our programs, we have 57 classrooms with multiple people in each room, so making sure that everyone felt like they had an opportunity to share. And then the achievement data, we'll lean right into those, so. Leaning into that data, kindergarten readiness is a big, big topic. It's a big topic for us. It's a big topic for our elementaries. And two years ago, through MSIP-6, the state introduced us to a required kindergarten screener. And so, every school district, in order to get all your MSIP-6 points, completes kindergarten observation within the first six weeks of kindergarten. So, it's not like you screen to then place. It has to be completed by a kindergarten teacher within the first six weeks of school. And then we either get the MSIP points if they complete it, or we don't. And we, as a district, chose to use the kindergarten observation form. And while I don't honestly can't tell you if kindergarten teachers and elementaries are using it for a lot of their data, we are digging in deeply to see how our kids are performing. A really exciting addition that we've added this year at the Early Ed Center is there is a PKOF. We just love acronyms, so. There's a pre-kindergarten observation form, and that actually has, we have transitioned our benchmark to using that same observation form. So, not only are we seeing how our kids are doing by someone new that assesses them once they get to kindergarten, we're assessing our students along the way by the preschool teacher, so they can report out to parents what does kindergarten readiness look like now. And again, that's a hard conversation. They're three. They shouldn't be kindergarten. You're right. We don't want them to be kindergarten-ready yet, and if they are, we're gonna continue to see how we can challenge them. But if they are moving on to kindergarten, it's very important that those messages are the same. So, that's been an awesome addition, and we look forward to learning more about that. So, we started it in the fall with a few teachers. Everyone completed the PKOF in the winter, and so then this spring, we'll be reporting out to families where their child is currently. And it's our hope that they have information to continue that growth, and so when they get to kindergarten, what does that look like? So, that's a little bit about the KOF and the PKOF. That chart, same chart you saw last year, but new student data. We always like to really look at that district average. So, our district, about 48.8% of our students showed that they were kindergarten-ready, and that's as a district as a whole. And then if you go down as a system, 48.7% of our students showed that they were kindergarten-ready. And so, as a system, as a whole, when you have 1,200 students, all but 80 of those students are considered at-risk, that is a huge celebration in terms of us leveling that playing field. That full-day column, again, I want to draw some attention to that. 100% of those students qualified for free and reduced lunch last year, and so, again, 100% of at-risk students scored better than the district average. Again, huge celebration. Tuition, those families are paying tuition. They could also qualify for early childhood special ed, but they have that full-day opportunity. They are rocking it. Half-day, those students come for about half the time. They are considered at-risk. They may or may not qualify for free and reduced lunch. So, again, they're within a few points there of the district average. The early childhood special ed is lower, and that's okay. And I'm really excited to show with you, how do we actually look at an early childhood special ed student to see if they are kindergarten-ready? So, our next slide is gonna focus on what the state is asking us to look at for those students. I also want to point out that the peers are in that exact same classroom, and so, a huge celebration to our early childhood special ed teachers, because our peers are actually outperforming any other group, and they are in that same classroom where they're getting four half-days a week in that early childhood special ed. Peer, we took away the word model a few years ago, because I don't know if any, if you have children, you may, I mean, sometimes my children are models, and most times they're not. And so, what we wanted to do is give a typically-developing child, and so those students, they just can't have an IEP. But, so, that's the only way that we now ask that they qualify for a peer. So, if a family is interested in four half-days a week, the only thing that we say is they can't have an IEP. As long as they don't have an IEP, then they're considered a peer. And we have MTSS on a few of our peers right now, and so they're very typically-developing, as they should be. So, we don't try out for preschool. We want to give all kids access. So, that kind of explains this first chart. This little chart here in the middle, and it might be easier to read in your pamphlet, but this is all just comparing students that are in full-day programming. And with that, you see the five domains. Those are the five domains of kindergarten readiness. And then you can see all students where they performed. And again, that 48% matches the district, as you know. And so, then what we wanted to see is students that come to kindergarten, that go to outside preschool, how are they performing? So, there are about 36% of those students are ready for kindergarten. And then if you take all of our student population and you pull out just the students that qualify for free and reduced lunch, that's where you'll see that 42.5. And then the most alarming number, and the reason we need to continue to share the message, is that last column, those are students that did not have access to preschool. They had no prior experience. Only 23% of those students were ready for kindergarten. So, again, it just shows that we, anything we can do to continue to share the message of preschool opportunities, whether it be us or it be our community, helping families connect with preschool opportunities, does make a difference on kindergarten readiness. And then the pie chart just shows you the number of the students that we're missing. And so, there are about 218 students that had zero access to pre-K that were in kindergarten this school year. So, just wanted to share that with you. I spoke with you a little bit about that early childhood special ed. This is what the state asks us to report. We're gonna focus on the green first, because it's always fun to celebrate, and then we're gonna talk about the pink, which we have a great plan for. So, these are the early childhood special ed outcomes, and there's actually three outcomes that we are asked to report on to the state if a child is making progress by the services that we're providing. There's three main domains, and those three main domains are that social-emotional, and then you have that knowledge acquisition, and then the last one is appropriate behaviors. Within each three of those, there's six different, like, skill sets that we're looking at. And as you can see, we're above the state expectation for how our students should be performing in those that have completed this form. So, we complete an early child outcome on any student who's been dismissed from an IEP or any student that's transitioning to kindergarten. So, that shows that our early childhood special ed program is performing above the state average in terms of the early childhood outcomes. The pink is where are students being taught. And so, the state is very highly encouraging and pushing us to continue to look at least restrictive environment. So, there used to be a theory that if a child qualifies for early special ed, we should take them out of their current setting and have them in an early childhood special ed classroom, and the state is saying, stop. Leave them where that child is, and let's figure out how to help that child be successful where they are, because most of our students are going to a typical kindergarten classroom. And so, we, as a system, are looking and encouraging, how can we ensure that we have the proper supports to leave students in their environment and provide the supports there, versus taking a student out of a classroom and then putting them in 100% self-contained-type classroom. So, that's your achievement data there. This slide speaks to early reading and fast bridge. Again, this is fall data. Typically, I speak with you about this each year, and so you can see this bottom, the dark blue are students that are requiring academic intervention, and you can see the district average for reading is about 15.8%. Of our kindergartners required an academic intervention, and then as a system, only about 15.2. So, again, leveling that playing field, celebration there. And then our math is the same. So, we're right there within .4 of the district average. We want that to be lower, so that's a celebration. And so, how can we continue that work? And so, I do think through our work with our guaranteed and viable curriculum, we'll be able to do that. So, not only do we look at the data, but we also, like I shared with you, we have packets and packets of information on our focus groups and our surveys. And so, what we did is we took each survey, and then we worked the team that create, or the survey, and then we would determine the themes within that survey. And then what we did is we took our focus groups, and those that held the focus groups reported out the themes in which those focus groups were. And so, then we came up with three overall themes in terms of strengths of, through this review, and then also opportunities. Huge celebration to our team in terms of the opportunities. We're not surprises. And so, I think that was affirming. I think there was a moment that we were like, let's keep looking, like, we know this. But I think that's affirming that we know where we want to continue to grow. So, nothing was super-shocking in terms of the opportunities, but I don't want to pass over those strengths. So, at this time, I just want to make sure that we're acknowledging the incredibly hard work that's happening in the classroom, and I say it every time I get the chance. And I say it every time I get the chance to talk about leadership, and it happens in the classroom. And so none of these strengths would be there if it weren't for the amazing staff that we're able to hire in those classrooms. So a few of you guys are here tonight, just incredibly thankful for the work you do. In terms of those opportunities, just to kind of highlight a few of those, that enhancing that kindergarten transition support, there's an asterisk there because what you'll see is that it actually is a strength. So our parents thought our transitions were like, overall, parents are like, this is awesome. There were so many ways in which we knew about what was happening. We felt informed. So that's a huge celebration, not only of our early childhood, but also of our elementary schools. So parents felt like transitions were a positive. Staff reported to us that we've got some work to do. Not surprising because typically if a transition doesn't go well, it really doesn't go well. And so what we want to do is figure out what is that percentage of students that aren't really going well, and what could we be doing differently? So that's an area that in which we can look at. Also, this strengthening family engagement and communication. We are kind of a unique early ed setting. Most families are very used to walking their child in, talking to the teacher each day, and then picking their child up. It's very different when students are, you know, transported and we, safety and security, parents are not walking their children into school. And so how can we continue to strengthen? Those teachers that are really savvy and hats off to Kami, our seesaw data that she puts in the butterfly bulletin each week, like there's ways that we can help them, but we want to continue to see like, where is it working really well and how can we grow that? And then that expanding resources and behavioral support. We have an amazing program, and we serve amazing students. And it's hard. So we have many of our classrooms, you know, you have twenty students. A hundred percent of those students are considered at risk. And so how can we ensure that we have the right proper supports and professional development so if people can feel empowered to handle the things in which we're asking them to do? So those are kind of the themes that came out of this work. And then our next steps is for us to then take this information, and then this information will then drive our school improvement plan, which then drives our building leadership, which then drives our PLCs, which drives our committee work. We also have that EE stakeholder task force. Last time I had the chance to talk with you all, I shared with you how our funding sources are shifting pretty drastically. How can we ensure we're doing our best with the resources that we have? And then CTTN is actually looking at transitions as one of their issues list. So I'm excited to work with Katie Malone and her team to share the information that we've gathered. And there's no sense in them reaching out to families. We've got it here. So let's dig in together and let's figure out how we can continue the great work and then also refine, as I talked about earlier, some of our practices and procedures to ensure that we are doing our best for the community we get to serve each day. That is early ed. I promise there will be time for questions. But before, I'm going to turn it over to Kate, and she's going to talk to you all about Gifted.
What a privilege it is to follow that. I'm also excited about some different experiences that we're connecting on together. But certainly a privilege to work in our district's Gifted Education Center and to share information with you tonight on behalf of our students, our staff, and our gifted community. We are recognized in the state of Missouri as one of the best gifted programs. That is because of our innovative learning experiences that we provide for students. It's because of state and national leadership that we have among us right now and in our program consistently. And it's because of the commitment that our district has made towards gifted education. Our mission in gifted education is to do the special job of helping students to develop their uniqueness while also coupling that with a tremendous sense of belonging. And then doing that in a way that allows them to truly develop their potential. We do that through incredible exploratory experiences for them. We are support systems for students, for one another, for teachers and buildings, for parents, and importantly, through a system of ownership and self-regulation so that students can begin to drive their learning. We serve fifteen-hundred students. That's not the number you heard yesterday, and there's a reason for that. And one is that that number changes rapidly throughout the year, which is really awesome for us. One of that, one reason is because of ninety, nine-hundred-and-fifty of those students are what you are familiar with when you think of Sage in North Kansas City because you know where the Northland Innovation Center is. And you know that nine-hundred-and-fifty students come to us each week for twenty percent of their time. But we also serve five-hundred students in the high school setting through our gifted resource specialists. So those students continue to be Sage students and continue to be part of Sage. Their resources are through one gifted resource specialist at each of our high schools. We have twenty-three PEG students in our program for exceptionally gifted students. And you've heard a little in the past about our Young Scholars Program where we are currently supporting about one-hundred students in, right now, one of our underrepresented schools. And those are high-potential students who may become gifted part of our program later, but will certainly develop learning skills for life. So in those, in our, among our demographics, we consistently find that we have more boys than girls. So similar to EEC, that would be probably about the only thing that we have similar, but we're going to learn together. So more boys than girls. But our students of color are underrepresented, and our white students make up the majority of our population. We have a discrepancy in the students, in students receiving services who are also ELL students, students who are special education students, and students who receive free and reduced lunch services. That mirrors a problem across our nation, and it's something that our goals also reflect. And we recognize that need for growth and that opportunity to evolve with our district. We'll talk about that. Our program services students from across all of our feeder paths, with the majority of our students, or forty-four percent more of our students, coming from our Staley feeder path. Our students progress through middle and into high school, and then our Staley enrollment trends upward. In North Kansas City schools, it dips slightly after, in North Kansas City schools feeder, we dip slightly after elementary and then peak again at high school, probably due to our IB program. And then Oak Park and Wenetanka are pretty consistent after elementary in terms of how we compare as a district. In Sage, or in our gifted program in general, our illuminators mindset competencies are at the heart of our work. We want to provide learning experiences that really promote choice for our students and that help our students to develop problem-solving and critical thinking skills. We're growing learners and equipping them with those skills that will lead to independence, will lead to understanding themselves, and ultimately to academic excellence. We've been a part of this strategic planning process. So several years ago, the district participated in that. And Sage goals were developed and then again revised through that strategic planning process and continue to be the goals that lead our work. So our first goal is to seek to lead through innovation through our instructional practices, our resources, and our tools. In our district, our teachers develop their units of studies, and they develop those to reflect the needs and the interests and curiosities of students. We also have guild experiences in our middle school. All of our work in terms of instruction is ever-changing, and it inspires curiosity and promotes authentic learning experiences. Our second goal couldn't have been more clearly defined when you saw the demographics because we know we need to service students in a more equitable and inclusive manner. We believe that identification should reflect our district, and our teams, team of teachers have worked to move that dial, but there is more work to do. I'm excited to say that we're actually even partnering with our early childhood friends. And you heard a little about their PKOF. We use a tremendous number of benchmarking processes, but there might be some processes we can continue to use that are part of the early childhood program. So we're excited about that. But finally, our third goal is to be a resource for our students and our families and our communities. So we want to respond to needs and connect with our community in real-world ways that can support both of us in a symbiotic way. So our gifted program has an advisory board that represents all of our stakeholders, including students who joined our advisory board just last year. They provide insight and expertise for us, and they help us to move forward and make progress with our goals. And those stakeholders were involved in different ways throughout the process, as Dr. Lawson will share. With our fiscal resources, I will say they might not be as complicated as early childhood's fiscal resources. But you'll notice that teachers are probably one of our best resources, and I would say not just teachers, but staff in general, are at the heart of our work as any program should be. But our teachers make incredible experiences for students and decisions with materials and services and opportunities for students. And so you can see that our materials that we have, our resources that we use are something that we considered, but we're very proud of. Gifted students have exceptional academic and intellectual abilities. And along with those characteristics, among those characteristics that gifted students have, some of those promote learning experiences that are incredible. And some of those characteristics create barriers to success as well. Advanced thinking, emotional intensities, heightened sensitivities, keen curiosity about everything, excellent memory, asynchronous development. All of those, when they're packaged into a young brain and a young body, can cause children to become or appear to be maybe quirky or misunderstood or struggle to fit in among peers and find their places in their community. At the same time, they can also be strong learners with an insatiable drive for knowledge and an empathetic heart to make a difference in their community and to truly make the world a better place. So our goal and the work that our team does is to support all gifted learners and create that environment and the culture that accepts them for genuinely who they are while helping them to see the limited potential that they have. So we're excited to hear even more about how the program evaluation will help us to continue that work. So thank you, Dr. Lawson.
So much like the early education evaluation questions, the Sage questions, we again lined with those goals. So that first question that you'll see really aligns with that we want to be leaders in innovation. So we asked our stakeholders for some feedback on that. So that first evaluation question really allows us to look and dig into that first goal. The second evaluation question addresses that sense of belonging of our current as well as recognizing our desire to align our demographics with our district more. And so that second question will provide us some insight to that. And then the third question speaks to our desire for students and stakeholders to make relevant connections between their learning and our world. So Sage, that is something else that we look at. So much like early education, this slide might replicate, but our focus groups got to be a little different. Although a student focus group at early ed would have been fabulous. We did not have a student focus group at early ed, but we did have two different focus groups with our Sage students, and I think they were incredibly relevant. So we had a third through eighth grade focus group, and then we had a separate focus group for our high schoolers because again, their experience is different, and we want to hear differently from them. So we had two student focus groups. We also had that staff focus group and then a parent focus group. Again, a shout-out to our academic services team. This, these focus groups were led by Samantha Poindexter, Dr. Sykes, and Shannon Gilliland. And so just a huge thank you to them. And then our surveys, again, very similar to early ed. They went to parents of gifted students. We were able to do that K-12 and ask questions that were relevant for those parent groups. And then our staff focus group, or our staff survey again, that K. And then we included our GRSSs to get some of their input on that as well in terms of those surveys. So great data that we look forward to sharing some of those themes. And then again, being able to pass that data on to Kate and her team to dig into even more deeply. So the achievement data, it's our hope that you'll see that our gifted students are performing really well on state testing, and the data proves that they are. A couple of things I want to point out is when you see that it's fairly close, you might be wondering why. So then I would ask Kate to share the grade levels in which our students took this versus a typically develop, or a typical student. We are taking those math EOCs much, much sooner as gifted students. And so that's why you might see that that, there isn't quite the same difference in the trend there. But again, our gifted students are very much performing higher than the district average, which we would hope and truly expect. But again, huge shout-out to our staff for that work. I also think, we also thought it would be good to dig into some of that college and career data that we often share. And so we wanted to see, you know, as Kate and I were explaining, I was like, we were asking ourselves, like, do our students have as many or more market value assets when they graduate? And so then we asked, we worked with the college and career team to then be able to compare that data with, for you. And so you'll see those that are currently, the MBAs, you can see that our gifted students are graduating with more MBAs. And then the, we wanted to share like our current and then where they are because Shannon wanted to be sure that we knew that there were more coming to them. And so they haven't graduated yet, but that's the anticipated graduate, graduate information in terms of those MBAs. And then we also were curious in terms of that participating in our early college. And you can see that many of our gifted students are involved in that early college. And also through Kate's research with that, and also as a parent of a gifted learner, learning like, what do our colleges want from our students? Do they want them participating in early college? Or do they want them to participate more in that AP? So that's a dialogue that we need to continue in making sure that the GRSSs are having those conversations with students. We need to know where our students are going and what those colleges are looking for. So we're helping guide them in the right places, and that's the role of that GRS. So just an interesting point of that. So through our focus groups, through our surveys, as well as all of our data, we were able to come up with three strengths and three opportunities. Those three overall themes of each. And so just want to expand on those a little bit. Again, we need to take that time to pause and celebrate those strengths. And that's not me standing before you today. It's not Dr. Sutton. What it is, is it's Kate's leadership and then the incredible team that is working with our gifted learner. So those strengths are a huge celebration of them and our students. We serve incredibly awesome students and families. So some of those strengths were just that Sage is a supportive and inclusive community for our gifted students. That's awesome to hear, and how can we continue that work? Students experience that personal growth, and then they have an opportunity to increase that emotional intelligence through their time as a gifted learner. And then Sage challenges our students. So it's not all just what it, what do you love and how, how can you show us what you can do? It's like, what is hard for you, and how can we help you grow that area too? So that's a huge strength for our gifted programming. Opportunities, so how can we continue to expand career and interdisciplinary experiences? We're excited for our leadership team to get to partner up with some of that work-based learning, and how can we continue to use our resources within that to create, to continue to create those real-world connections so that our students will see how their work is relevant? You might be surprised, but gifted students are definitely going to ask you like, how does this apply to me and how does this apply to my world? So we need to make sure that we are able to speak to all of those things. And then that, that second goal is build peer networks beyond strength, beyond Sage, and then strengthen those adult connections. One thing that we found through our data was something that Kate and I, we kind of started digging, and we're like, okay, wait, this is the job of the team. But it's hard not to dig in when you have some pretty great data in front of you. But our students at the Sage Center, much like our students in our home schools, they come to school young, and they feel like they belong. And then you have this middle school shift, and we see that at the Sage Center as well. And so how can we work with our students so we can better understand like, what is different? And what do you need differently from us? Difference is the high schoolers that completed the survey, they feel like they belong, and they are. So how are they connected that maybe our other students that aren't gifted aren't connected? And look at that because we saw more of like a bell, like they were highly, they felt like they belonged, and then it kind of dips. But then once it gets to high school, our students that qualify for gifted, they were up there again. And so that would be great data too, to say like, what are these students doing that maybe some of our students in high schools that aren't gifted are missing? And how can we connect those? So just some great things that we can dig into. And then that final one goes back to the demographics, and how can we continue to streamline our identification process and really enhance communication amongst all stakeholders so that they have the information they feel like they need? Kate would not ever toot her own horn, but since Kate has got there, we have done some incredible work around this. We used to use the COGAT as that identifier for some of that initial testing. Last year, Kate led the charge on us piloting the Nagliera. Did I say Nagliera? I told Kate, I'm like, you're going to make me say that word. She's, I had it right earlier, Naglieri. So we used the Naglieri last year in a pilot group. And then this year, we went full-scale with that. And why you might need to know that that's important. It actually is a non-verbal assessment, and it's normed for all demographics. Where the COGAT, some Where the COGAD, some may say that that has some bias norms, where the Nagliero is normed for all demographics. So again, just another way that we can shift that identification process. So how can we continue to ensure that our Sage demographics align more closely with our district demographics? So exciting things are happening there. We're also increasing our testing in terms of, we used to have a very small group of school psychs that were doing some of our testing. Now Kate has worked with Pam August, and every school psych is testing their homeschool students. And so we're really spreading that. And so oftentimes, if you know your student, you can find a better place to maybe test them versus like a visitor coming in a building that's not used to working there. So how can we just continue to find ways that we can increase the opportunity for students to qualify for our Sage program? So much like the early ed center, our next steps, again, Kate and I were really excited when we were looking at this, because the Sage, when they opened, they had a very robust strategic plan. And we have really kept on track with those action steps. And so now how can this data help us shift some of those action steps to be a little more timely and a more real and relevant to our current needs? So this data will be used to really dig into that strategic plan, which then drives our school improvement plan, which then drives the leadership team, and then that committee work, as well as Kate is excited to share this with the gifted advisory. And I think as early as next week, I heard. So before I hand it back to Dr. Sutton, I do just want to thank Kami, Kate, and honestly, all of the teams, those I mentioned, those I didn't mention. This was awesome work, and I teased Dr. Sutton about it. But this work is truly going to make us better, and so we are incredibly honored that we got to be some of the first programs that got to be part of this process. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sutton. He's going to share with you where we're going from here.
Thank you, Dr. Lawson. So just a little bit of a preview for the next five years. Our team has identified 10 programs that we will evaluate over the next five years, two per year. And we are so excited to welcome Dr. Porter into the program evaluations next year with alternative ed. Obviously, there's been a lot of work done. You've heard a lot about this over the course of the past couple of years. And so we thought it'd be an important time to really begin to dive in. And Avid next year as well will be the two that we will begin evaluating probably as early as July. We'll dig into that work. We learned a lot this year about what it takes to really dig in and complete a comprehensive, strong evaluation. And so we're looking forward to this. You'll see too, with these 10 programs, it's all on a five-year rotation. So with that being said, our team is glad to take any questions that you all may have.
I turn it to you. Laura?
Thank you, Madam President. So Dr. Sutton, Dr. Lawson, you guys did a great job. This was very, very helpful, and it was a lot of information. I have to say, I have a statement and then a question. I know that the early education program is very good, and I know at least two families that moved to this district specifically for the preschool program. So I think that that's part of the reason we're seeing that bump that the other school districts around us are not seeing. I think it's awesome, and I love the gifted program. It's been beneficial for my family. I know it's a great building. They do amazing things in there. The students are really engaged and involved, and I can see the difference. And I've heard from families who are experiencing that, so thank you very much. And I wanted to ask, and it's only because I don't recall, and this was a long time ago, but when my son went through Sage the first time and he tested for it, his teacher brought it to my attention that he should probably test for it, and then he tested for it. Are we opening that up so that all students can test at some point? So that we can kind of overcome, and is there a way to overcome language barriers with the exam as well?
So great question. First answer is that, so the first answer is that we utilize universal benchmarks. Our district has a pretty comprehensive assessment approach, both with the cognitive assessments that we use, Nagliero that Dr. Lawson shared, and our universal academic assessments. So those are our first tool. But any student can be referred for gifted. Not all students are tested. But with our Nagliero assessment, which is a non-verbal assessment, it does have three separate tests that are a component of it. And that's something that we're considering. It is a test that can be used as a qualifying test. I can get into the weeds of Missouri gifted guidelines. And within those guidelines, there's different approaches that we use. Currently, we do not do that, but it's a consideration and something that we would open up our thinking to as we're looking to identify students who may have traditionally been under identified. And this is a tool that we have right there of course. So I hope I answered that.
Thank you. Actually, all of you, thank you. I know how hard you work over there. And I would not want to be in a building with 1,200 three-year-olds or whatever.
Some days.
Middle school's rough enough. I really had a lot of questions, but for the sake of time, in terms of early education center, if you had your druthers and you could do something extra special above and beyond, like what we're already doing, what would that be?
Above and beyond what we're already doing, providing more resources for family. Things that we can't necessarily help with when it comes to utilities. How can I hook you up with the right resources to make sure that you can put gas in your car so you can come to a meeting? Or how can I help you with that situation? There are so many factors that impact a kid when they come into school. It's not just lack of preschool. There's a, the whole environment. And sometimes our families need more than just us. So how can we provide them that support too? Because if we provide that and the home life is feeling good, then the kid comes to school feeling good. And there's a different pressure taken off that child and also the family. And so what more can we do to help the family as a whole?
So socioeconomic is what I'm hearing you say. And one other question, like when the, when we're noticing that some kindergartners are not necessarily doing as well as we thought they were going, is there a percentage or number that we've got on that? Because we've been doing this now three years.
What's your, tell me more about your definition.
Yeah, it would be the percent of, when we looked at the data earlier, the percent of students that require intervention heading into kindergarten. So all of our buildings do have like an NTS or a support system of interventions for those identified students.
Do we know what those numbers are? I mean, is it?
Yes.
Two percent, one percent, five kiddos?
It was. Intervention, the percent of students, so the percent of students that required interventions was 15%.
15%.
Yes. And so those are the, those are the students that, which is great about with, and we still have opportunities for our transition with early education, but we know who those students are. We know, you know, coming in, about where they're performing, and that allows our buildings to begin some of those interventions early.
And that 15% is district-wide, so they may have attended our preschool, or they may not have attended our preschool. And so just note that that is, that's what this is. So those that have attended our preschool, again, it's about 15%. But then what we do is we break down by program of what of our students needed an academic intervention as well. Another thing that we do is we partner with those schools in terms of, like if we did have a student and we have any type of plan that worked with that student, we ensure that that goes on. And we're excited this year, working with Dr. Porter and her team, that's going electronic. Because what we also know is sometimes we may have given it to one school, but then that child may have moved. And so with it being electronic and it attached in our system, then that will really go with that child wherever that child ends up in kindergarten. So we're excited and thankful for Dr. Porter and her team's work to help us get that electronically.
So all our data for interventions will be there for teachers in a one place? So those kindergarten teachers can just pick up, hopefully where we left off.
Thank you.
Joe, did you have some questions? We're not hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Recognizing that these programs certainly are premier, even in our surrounding areas and at the state level, are both of these programs that we have presentations on tonight full?
So I can speak to, in terms of gifted, we're not full. We have capacity in our building. We don't have the teaching staff probably to continue to grow at the rate our capacity could allow without, without being prepared. But it also changes, so through the year rapidly. So great question, and it's not a direct answer.
And to answer your question in terms of early ed, so early childhood special ed, we serve them even when we feel full. And so early childhood special ed, we serve 100% of the students that qualify by their third birthday. And so by law, when that child turns three, then we will serve that child. So early childhood special ed, we serve, we do not have a waitlist because it's not possible to have one. There's a little clause that if a child turns three, like in April, they can choose as a family to continue first steps until August, or they can choose to start with us in April or May. So just depending on what that family chooses. And then in terms of our half-day program, they actually are not full because we've been able to provide more families with full-day opportunities because of that Mo-QPK does not require free and reduced lunch. And so where you'll see the most space is our half-day programming. Most families, well, not most, some fam, the families that would like to have our services typically, that's not a great option for them. And so that, and we're super excited. Thank you, Dr. Johnson and his team. We will be adding another full-day room next year. And so each year, we've averaged about two full-day rooms. Next year, we're going to add one more, and we're super excited about that. Again, spoke lots of reasons why, but being able to increase the numbers of students that we're accessing. So we're excited for that, if that answers your question.
Thanks. Both programs showed on a slide that the cost per pure, per pupil for that program. And it seems like intuitively like a great value. Do we ever benchmark that cost against other like programs?
I have never done that, and I'm not sure if Matt and his team have. That would be interesting to look at, but not something we currently have done.
Okay. But I mean, in my gut, it seems like you're a great value, and I believe you are.
Thank you. I'll tell my husband.
The last question that I have, I'm all about feedback, as you are. When you put together and invite people to your focus groups, do you ever have people decline? I would think that they would love to talk about it.
I, no, I emailed and reached out to all our families, and yeah, they all showed up. So.
Okay, great. And then, and then the last similar question is when you send out surveys, we always like to know the percentage of respondents. Do we have, are we over 70%, 80%? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, we actually do have our total. So let's see. I have the totals. I don't have them in percentages, but we do have like the total number. But I can get you that for sure. I'm happy to get that for you.
Okay. Well, I would just guess that it's a large percentage, but I was just curious.
I assure you, the staff filled it out. They had a lot to say.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate it.
First, thank you for the presentation. It was great to see it in this format and to get a preview of the format that we'll see in the coming programs that will be evaluated. So I have two questions. The first is, so definitely my older kiddo, Charlie, has really benefited from the gifted program. And I love how excited she is and how engaged she is in all of the coursework that she does. And she's also just a naturally conscientious, rule-abiding person, unlike my younger daughter, who will not be named on video. But so in the line of work that I'm in in my day-to-day, I talk a lot as an HR person who's trying to get managers and leaders to invest equitably in all of their people, that everyone has potential, but not everyone has opportunity. And so I'm wondering if there's, or what kind of cross-pollination in some of the innovative teaching methods, or even some of the topics and how they're addressed, is happening across the entire district? And so this isn't necessarily a question specifically for you, Kate, to put you on the spot, but maybe more for Dr. Sutton. But how are we cross-pollinating and trying to continue to bring that equity to every classroom? Even if someone is not identified particularly as gifted, but has opportunity, basically, to, for us to see that potential?
You know, ideally, we'd love to have more opportunity for our gifted teachers and our teachers to have time for, just to get together and have that collaboration. I will say, one of the areas that I think is going to allow us to make tremendous progress in that, with regards to your question, is the Future Ready Lab. Now that we have, like, we're going to be having all of our fifth-grade teachers come through there. We've had a number of elementary, other elementary teachers, administrators. Our gifted teachers are up there all the time. And so we're starting to see, I think, just a merge of innovative practices that are beginning to happen, and more just natural collaboration between what's happening there at the gifted center, and even the work that Kami is going out, who's our coordinator at the Future Ready Lab, and work that she's going to do with students in fifth-grade classrooms as well. So not to the extent that we would love for it to be, probably per se, but certainly, I think with the Future Ready Lab, it puts us a step in the right direction.
And my second question, I think, Dr. Lawson, you referenced a U-curve for engagement for students. So seeing the younger kids more engaged, and then like a dip in middle school, and then seeing it go up again in high school. So I'm wondering what kind of processing you've done on that information? Because we, you know, we've had that engagement panorama survey before, and I think a lot of us were concerned about the percentage of engagement, engagement, especially at the, in the secondary level. So what are some of your thoughts about that? And what are we learning about that that we might be able to apply to the rest of our secondary students?
That is exactly what Kate and I were talking about. And to be honest, the digging in is where we were getting stuck and not getting all of this completed. And so that's the work that we will continue. And so we have the information here, but we haven't really dug into like the why, and really what it will be, a lot of those follow-up, maybe like interviews of students or. And so engagement is one thing, but it really was that sense of belonging that I was speaking of. When they're coming in, they feel like they're seeing and heard as who they are. And then their middle school, they maybe aren't feeling that quite as much. But then what we noticed with our gifted learners is by high school. And so we started to dig in, and then I was like, wait, that's the work of your team. But, you know, and so then we kind of refocused this work, but you can speak to that.
Well, I just want to speak just for a moment to your first question, and then as it connects to this question. Sometimes we do work and we don't quite know, it's not, we don't see the intentional connection until a little bit later. And this, your questions and this work will guide some of that further work. But a preview to what I'd want to dig into, one of our middle school programs is called Guilds. Those are self-selected, student-run, student-driven organizations that are created at Sage. It's a program that our middle school teachers designed, and it's a very unique approach. What I heard students say in advisory is what they've learned from Guilds has led them to be empowered students who know how to initiate and organize high school programming for themselves, clubs. And I am excited to dig into that as an example. And I don't know that I'll have data. I don't know that I'll have something that's replicable. But it's an example of something that we get a nugget of information, and we know where it starts, and we know why we're doing it, and we see the work that's happening among kids in our setting. But it didn't occur to us, or maybe it did, because they've been doing it for a little bit longer, that that's what it could look like later. So we, I'm excited to really dig into that kind of question and then connect back with our high school folks. And then, of course, what that would lead us to is that cross-pollination. Those clubs are not designed for strictly gifted students. They are clubs for kids. They're opportunities to belong, but they're also opportunities for kids to lead. And again, I said that as one example. FLO, Future, or First Lego League would be another good example. Science Olympiad Theater, those are cross-pollinated groups that we already have in existence right now. And we probably aren't measuring the degree of leadership that might be happening. And we don't need to, probably, but it is something that we can acknowledge that it's going on and maybe ask more questions. So that's, that's my extra two cents on it.
First of all, again, I thank the district for its ability to look at itself and take a serious look and continue to put a process in place where we can systematically go forward. I think it's really been of value to us tonight to hear this. I hear you saying that it is extremely valuable to your programs, and I know the students and teachers will benefit from that. So thank you for being courageous. So thank you for being courageous and starting this and Dr. Lawson for taking both on this.
I did not. I just teased. These guys are the way.
Because it's been a good place to start. I noticed on the early childhood, our materials costs are pretty high and I think I understand, but could you address that?
Yeah, that's a great question. I should have pointed that out. But that, we count, like the tables we purchased, the chairs we purchased, all of that is part of that materials and supplies. And so that's why that, I did notice that and I should have pointed that out. So like, it's everything we purchase from that room is what we call material and supply. Anything under $5,000 now is still that material and supply. And then our purchase services also might look higher because all of the contract, any contract that's early childhood is, we divided up by group. And so then the portion of the students that attend something that are in full day, then we would have that cost. And so an example is like, we don't have encore for our students, but we do have what-if puppets that come in. And so then we split the cost of what-if puppets so that they can have an encore-like experience. They get it about once every three to four weeks. And so that's why you'll see some of those are different.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Additionally, I really, we've talked about this in some other meetings, but the transitions between each phase of our district and not operating in silos, but remembering it's a continuum and it's a child that is going through that continuum. I'm really excited about that and I hope the board will be able to hear more about the goals that CTTN and staff are working on with that. And that we begin to measure and track progress toward making it a more seamless process as kids transition through. And you've given some really great examples tonight, just how we're working through specifically into kindergarten, which is really a huge jump for parents. So thank you for describing that. I'm excited about the outcome for that. The other thing, I just wanted to say kudos to you, Kate, for being brave and looking at different methodology to measure and include our kids already and having a solution maybe for something you identified very early on in your role.
I appreciate that. I have to add, there was a lot of work, and you know, Dr. Donell Marsden and team, that a lot of people did a lot of research and put a lot in place. So I was able to push that to the, across the line and worked really closely with Dr. Schenks to make that happen. So many people worked. And I think we should probably give a lot of kudos to the first and fourth grade teachers who took on a new assessment and did it in a.
Very good. Well, I do. And I really appreciate the team being here tonight because it all really helps to see you all and just share our appreciation for all of your hard work that is sometimes behind the scenes, but we do see the impact and truly appreciate you each and every day. With that though, you're in your first year of using that, correct? Have you, and you've had your first cohort of students that have taken it and admitted, have you seen any results from it?
Well, I'm looking at a few teachers whose caseloads are just growing and that's outstanding. So the answer is yes. It is hard to stop and study the data in the midst of it coming, but yes, fourth grade has grown up, grown tremendously. That's a tested area. First grade has also grown more than typically. And what we'll look forward to studying is the demographics of those referrals in addition to just the demographics of the students qualifying, because that's telling us a lot of information, even if they don't qualify.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Very good. Thank you. That'll be another interesting thing to be continuing to watch. And then also just the comments around peer connections. I just feel like that will just be truly beneficial on all sides of that as, to meet our high school goals and our future goals for the students. So anyway, thank you for an outstanding presentation. Appreciate you all. I think that is a wrap tonight. I will adjourn our meeting and for those of you interested, the girls are playing basketball at Staley tonight. So, oh yes, I'm sorry.
I just wondered if you would want to announce that the next meeting is at Winnetonka.
Yes. Sorry, I didn't hear from there, but. Thank you for reminding me. Yes, our next meeting is at Winnetonka and we will be doing our.
Culture of Excellence.
Culture of Excellence. Yes, so thank you very much for coming tonight.